I think there's a wave out there now, isn't it?
There's a wave out in the Atlantic.
Yes.
Hi.
Could be in a band.
Were you in the drum line?
No, but I did play drums.
I'd like to call the August 18th, 2015 PCPS City School Board meeting to order. And would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Parrish, are there any additions or modifications to the agenda?
There are none this evening.
And it's my understanding there are no recognitions tonight?
Correct.
Okay, I'd like to call upon Mr. Bowen for the financial update, please.
Good evening Chairman Cast, school board members, and Dr. Parrish. I have just a few updates for the finance report tonight. First, we'll be adding something new to the agenda for this year. School donations that are, I'm sorry, donations that are made to the schools and those donations that are deposited into the activity funds at the schools, we will be bringing those and including them on the agenda for the school part here. In the past, staff has only included those donations on the agenda that have been, those donations that have been brought into our operating budget. So we thought this was an opportunity to, of course, let the community know, let the board know, but also take this opportunity to recognize all those that generously contribute to our schools and our student clubs and organizations. Last fall, I briefed the board on a new program called Veritime. Veritime is a web-based time and attendance management system. Staff began testing this program at the school board office last September. And after several months of testing, the program was rolled out to our school-based clerical staff. And then we added our maintenance workers, our custodians, and food service workers. But we have the final stage of our rollout, and that begins this month when we introduce Veritime to our parent educators. So once, once completely rolled out, we'll have about 55 employees that are using the system. And there are several benefits to this program. First and foremost, the system will be used to help us, aid us in our compliance with the Fair Labor Standards Act. The system is an electronic means for capturing, clocking in, employee clocking in and clocking out. So it will be as easy as taking this ID badge, running it over a card reader, and then they're clocked in or clocked out. This is so much of the technology that we use for our copiers. Time sheet submissions by the employees and approvals by the supervisors will again be done electronically. So by having this electronic process, we eliminate the pen and paper process that we've been using for so many years. So we expect to save paper a whole lot more. So training with the parent educators will begin this month, and we will run it live with them beginning the first day of school. The next item I want to talk about is in reference to item 6F on the agenda. And this is a VRS resolution not allowing hybrid employees to direct their voluntary contributions to a 403B account. 2015 General Assembly passed legislation allowing hybrid employees to direct their voluntary contributions to a non-traditional 403B account. This legislation requires the school board to pass the resolution. And that resolution, if, should be passed even if it's, if it's to allow the employees to contribute or not allow. And staff is recommending at this time that the school board pass the resolution not allowing the hybrid employees to contribute. This is not a one-time opt-in or opt-out option. This can be considered by the board down the road in the future if we determine that there's a need for this plan. A little bit of background. About the hybrid employee. Why are they called hybrid employees? Well, the hybrid employees participate in two benefit plans. It's a defined benefit plan and a defined contribution plan. The defined benefit plan is a guaranteed retirement benefit to the employee upon a formula, based on a formula by VRS, and that's years of service, average final compensation, and then a multiplier. The defined contribution, well, with that defined benefit plan, VRS assumes all the risk with the investment. So that, that benefit to the employee is guaranteed based on that formula. So fluctuations in the market do not impact what the employee will receive as a, as a retirement benefit. With the defined contribution, the employee assumes the responsibility of that investment. The employee has to take a more active role in investing their funds. Now, there's, under the defined contribution plan, there's, there's a mandatory piece, and then there's a voluntary piece. And what we're, what this legislation is addressing is that voluntary component of the defined contribution plan. PCPS currently has 13 hybrid employees, and only one of those employees is contributing to making a voluntary contribution. I reached out to that employee and shared this information with them, and at this time there was no interest in this employee contributing to a 403B. Currently, under the, under existing structure, all contributions are managed by the VRS. And as such, the VRS assumes the fiduciary responsibility. And what that means is that as, as a fiduciary, they have a legal obligation to protect, to the greatest extent possible, the employee's interest. So they set up the plan design, they provide the planned investments, and, and they assume that responsibility. With all funds invested with VRS, employees receive a combined investment report. So again, hybrid employees have a defined benefit plan and a defined contribution plan. All of these investments, these plans are on one report for the employee to, to see. And also, under the current structure, responsibility for education and training and required notification with VRS. So that's under the current structure. Now, if the, with the board, if the board decides down the road to allow employees, the hybrid employees, to contribute to the 403B, what is the impact to PCPS and to the employees? Well, the impetus for this really is that the 403B plan is, VRS does not operate a 403B plan. So if we allow this, what has to happen is that PCPS has to establish a new plan with our third-party administrator. We currently have a 403B plan, but it's a traditional plan. The one that we're required to set up under this program is a non-traditional plan. And the major differences there are, under the traditional plan, employees can take hardships and loans against their investment. Under this plan, employees are not allowed. Employees, employees would not have the benefit of a combined investment report. Employees would receive reports from VRS and from our third-party administrator. PCPS assumes the fiduciary responsibility, although it is shared with our third-party administrator. And then PCPS would be responsible for the education, training, and required notifications. So as you can see, if the board passes this resolution not allowing hybrid employees the option, then the responsibility for the plan, the planned investments, the reporting, the education, and required notification stays with the VRS. And then if allowed, then that, that responsibility will transfer, it's a transfer to PCPS. So we have one employee, again, that's contributing, making, making that voluntary contribution. And I, and I believe at this point, just for that one employee, who's also indicated that there, there's no interest in contributing to a 403B, that it, we don't want to assume that risk for really no one who's really interested in participating. And that concludes my report this evening.
Any questions?
I have a, I have a couple of questions, just for, for my education on this. It's either, is, is it either/or? Like, it's either VRS or this voluntary 403? Or is it they still have the VRS, but they can, like, in a deferred comp kind of way, invest some more of their money into this voluntary 403B?
Yeah, so the, the employee, the hybrid employee can contribute 4%, an additional 4% to voluntary. That if we allow this, they'll be able to contribute, continue to contribute part of that to the, to the 457 plan, which is the plan operated by VRS. And they can contribute part of that to the 403B. The issue with that is that that 4%, when that voluntary contribution adds a total of 9% of what the employees have to contribute. So this, this is an issue I brought to the board back in, I think it was in April, May, that VRS had contacted us. They're trying to educate the hybrid employees about the importance of making these voluntary contributions because since the pension reform in 2012, the responsibility for investment and for retirement has been largely placed on the employee.
To muddy the water, do know that these employees could still, beyond the voluntary contribution amount?
Yes.
Could go well beyond that and still put additional money in any one of options that we have for all employees in the school division? So they could do it in a 403B that our third-party administrator holds. What we're just talking about is that part that is the voluntary contribution that's part of this new plan for the hybrid employees. But do know, any one of them could go beyond that voluntary and go to other plans that we have a number of other employees contributing to. Okay, and this is something that if next year we wanted to revisit it, we could change our minds and allow it if, if employees expressed an interest in it. Okay, thank you.
And I'll be checking with employees as, as our hybrid employees' numbers increase, and that's what will happen, because anybody hired now without prior VRS service will be a hybrid employee. So we will be checking with our hybrid employees to gauge their interest in, in this program.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? About the Veritime, is there a plan in place to, how, what happens if somebody forgets to clock in or clock out?
Great question. There are several ways for an employee to record their time. The easiest way, of course, is with the badge. If they leave their badge at home or for some reason the card reader's not working, they can go to a computer, and they can log in. And that process takes anywhere from 30 to 45 seconds. That's, that's the second way, and that, those are the two ways we would encourage employees. If they have, just forget, then we have compilers in the schools, and these are office, folks that are in the office, and they will have to manually adjust the time for those employees. We expect that we'll see a lot of that as employees familiarize themselves and remind themselves that they need to use their, their ID badge to, to clock in. So it will be a process, I'm sure, over a couple of months, trying to get folks accustomed to this new process.
Okay. Great question. Any other? Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Mr. Pappas, could you give us an operations update, please?
My pleasure. Good evening Chairman Cast, school board, and Dr. Parrish. Summer's short, the window to get everything done seems even shorter. But operations was very busy this summer, and I'm pleased to report that food service had a wonderful partnership with Aramark and the Mitchell Boys and Girls Club, serving as a vendor and serving meals under the summer food service program. Additionally, food service has been working hard. Menus and students in high school will be greeted with a self-serve taco, all designed to help increase participation at the high school. In transportation, a alternate pickup and drop-off location request form was sent home to all K through five parents. And this was a great opportunity to have parents who have daycare needs and children who will not be picked up at their home bus stop or brought off at their home bus stop to notify us in advance, so we can do routes, and we can take care of that sort of the first week of school, which is typically busy for everyone, is much more comfortable for both parents and transportation staff. Next week, we'll be doing our in-service training for all bus drivers and bus aides. It's one of two that we have to do every year. In custodial services, we're just putting the finishing touches on summer cleaning. For all the schools, faculty and staff and students will be greeted with freshly cleaned rooms and wax hallways. In maintenance, we're very busy putting the buildings back together and getting them right up to snuff for the 2015-16 school year. At PMS, we've continued our efforts to maintain this 83-year-old building. Some of the summer's activities include making cosmetic changes of inside and out. Inside, we painted several classrooms, hallways, bathrooms, and locker rooms. We've replaced well-worn carpet in selected areas and replaced it with a light-colored vinyl tile. We've enhanced the appearance of the hallway between the back of the stage and the chorus room. And on the exterior of the building, the marquee that the PTO purchased is up and running at the front entrance outside, as well as we've done some increased curb appeal through the advent of some entryway paint and some plantings in the front yard. Prior to the opening of school, parking lots will be painted by staff, and this way it will be much easier during big events for both schools and parks and recreation. At PHS, we've done some work in the commons bathrooms, making it much more appealing for students and easier to clean. We have erected the walk-in freezer that we got from Quantico, which will make food service much easier. And lastly, in several of the schools, we had to do some extensive fire roll-down doors and fire suppression systems in the kitchen floors to meet current regulations. And that concludes my operations report.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Pappas? Do you happen to know the sodium content of the seasoning used in the meat at the taco bar?
What did G. Ray ask?
We just gave the salt shaker a little salsa.
Any other questions or comments? And you can report directly to Dr. Carter on that issue. Thank you. Dr. Cully, would you give us an instructional update, please?
Good evening Chairman Cast, members of the board, and Dr. Parrish. I'll begin my update this evening with our SOL pass reads, which many of you saw on the newspaper last week. All right, so let me first highlight some of the changes that occurred in the past several years for you. For the first time this year, the Virginia Board of Education reduced the number of SOL tests. So that was a welcome change. We talked about that on and off throughout the year. I also just wanted to remind you that this was just our second year with the new reading, writing, and science tests that were designed to be more rigorous, like the math test that we just took for the third time. And this was also the third time that we had totally online administration of the tests, the technology-enhanced items, and this whole focus on critical thinking and problem-solving skills. PCPS City Schools, students scored at or above the pass rate for the state average on all but one of 28 tests. And in the aggregate here, looking at just the division pass rates, we are well above the state pass rate. But I'd like to continue by sharing some highlights of the various tests. The pass rate for all PCPS students for the English reading test increased by five percentage points this year. Of the seven reading tests taken by our students, five had higher pass rates than the last year, with our pass rates as high as 97%. We also saw double-digit increases in our pass rates in reading at both the elementary school and the middle school, including a grade six pass advanced rate increase of 11 percentage points. So looking at passing and pass advanced. In math, our performance improved on all 10 of the tests, and you know that was one of our focuses this year. We saw double-digit increases on math pass rates at the elementary and middle schools. And at the high school, we saw pass rates from 89% to 98% on all tests. All five of the science SOL tests taken by PCPS students had pass rates 86 or higher, and the highest there was 98%. Of note would be the pass advanced rate for biology, which nearly tripled this year. Last year, we had 10% of our students passing advanced. This year, we had 28% of our students pass advanced. Of the six social studies tests that students take, five had pass rates of 89% or higher, and the highest there was 99%. And the pass advanced rate for our Virginia Studies students, those are our youngest students, our fourth graders, was 48%. Nearly half of our fourth graders had a pass advanced score. As we look ahead, teachers come next week, and schools are analyzing data, and they're looking at their different curricula and planning instruction based on the student performance. We are looking at new history and, and social studies SOLs coming this year, which means we'll be waiting for VDOE to land a crosswalk, and a framework at our feet, and then looking at a new test ahead in a couple of years in, in 2018. We're also, I'm starting that same work on the math framework, but we're a year out. We're just looking at the SOLs this year. They will come out next September, and then that new test will be in 2019. What we're doing right here in PCPS is continuing to work both with the state and with our teachers and students to assess student progress on SOL tests, and then in those areas where we've taken away SOL tests, I'm looking at some performance-based assessments and, and looking at measuring things a little differently. The other part of my update tonight is back to school. And I'm sure some folks out there are very happy to see this coming, and some might be a little sad, but our, we're excited because we have New Teacher Orientation Monday, and we're excited to see all of our new teachers. And then we'll have all of our teachers return on Wednesday, and we'll gather as a division, hoping to see lots of our board members there on Friday, the 28th, at 10:30 at the high school for a division-wide convocation. Open houses will be the following week, middle school on September 1st, high school the second and third, primary school, elementary school also on the second. And all of that information, especially the times and breakdowns by grade levels, right on our website and also on the individual school sites. And just a reminder to all those students out there, school does start September 8th, and we're excited and ready for them to come. So that concludes my instructional update this evening. If you have any questions? I'll be there.
Questions or comments for Dr. Cully?
And do know, we'll dig a little deeper as we typically do. We have a, we have a more detailed, thorough presentation for you tonight during our work session. We need to dig down into the data a little further.
Okay. Anybody? Dr. Cully, thank you very much. Mr. Melton, will you lead us in the consent agenda, please?
All right, this evening for our consent agenda, we have A, approval of financial reports that are enclosed; B, approval of personnel actions enclosed; C, authorization to dispose of surplus property enclosed; D, authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with the attached request enclosed; and E, approval to accept donations and gifts enclosed.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Dr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman Cast?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Okay. Item A, consideration of approval of minutes of June regular meeting work session and certification of closed meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Reimers?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Dr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman Cast?
Abstained.
Motion passes 5, 1 abstention.
Consideration of approval of minutes of July special organizational meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Dr. Carter?
Stained.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman Cast?
Was I here?
Yes.
Thank you. Approved.
Aye.
Motion passes 5, 1 abstention.
Consideration of approval of second reading of changes to the policy manual. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we originally brought these changes to you for first reading at your June meeting, and these represent changes to policy that need to be made as a result of the work of the General Assembly last winter and spring, and also to ensure that we align with the current practices that we have. So at this point, I would recommend approval of the changes to the policy manual as presented this evening.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, a second?
Second.
Thank you, any questions or comments? Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Dr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman Cast?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Thank you. Consideration of approval of first reading and move to second reading, change to policy manual 1-6.2, Agenda Preparation and Dissemination. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, this came as a result of a request by the board to actually change the order of your agenda. So looking into policy, we have to actually make a change to policy in order to allow you to do that. So what we've done, and also please know that was, this was on advice of your legal representation, is we've tried to make it as flexible as possible so you can make it, you can make the change once this is approved at any point that you decide that you would like to do that. So once you do approve this after second reading in September, then we can go ahead and make the change to your agenda. So at this point, I recommend that we move this change to the policy manual to second reading.
Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, any questions or comments? Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Dr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman Cast?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Consideration of approval of revised unified pay plan. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, as you remember, in June during your work session, we actually presented this to you as part of a presentation. As you also remember, about a year ago, you approved that we would hire a management advisory group called MAG to actually do a compensation and classification study. This is directly connected to our strategic plan because one of our goals in the strategic plan is to ensure that we retain our highly qualified staff and look at compensation as part of that. So MAG was able to complete the work with the regard to our employees who are on the unified pay plan. So this is our non-teaching staff. They were able to complete that in May, so we could bring that recommendation forward to discuss it with you in June. And tonight, what we're doing is bringing forward the actual pay plan with the grade and classifications that the MAG group have recommended. They are still working on the teacher part of the pay plan, because as you can imagine, that's taking quite a, quite, quite a great deal of work on their behalf. So we will be bringing that information to you during the course of the fall, once they've completed that work and we're able to bring it to you. So this evening, you're just actually making adjustments to the unified pay plan, which, as I said, changes the pay range on some of the jobs, and some of the classifications are changed. As part of that, we do recommend that, as part of your vote tonight, that we'll bring two employees to the minimum of what their, their, now their classification is, and that's costing us a total of $1,089. Recommended changes for other employees that MAG made, we'll bring those forward to you when we bring the results of the teacher study, because it would be similar to what we're doing in terms of recommendations with teachers. So at this point, I recommend approval of the revised unified pay plan, and that means it will be in place from this date on.
Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? I do have one question. You gave us the fiscal impact of two employees. Do you see it as a material fiscal impact going forward, the adjustments?
For the two employees?
No, for the...
No, at this point, that's really going to be the only impact that we actually see. We'd bring forward other recommendations they have with the teacher, which would be a little bit more of an impact, still not great, but we wanted to wait until we finish that teacher study. So now, as we bring people in, we may see a little bit of an impact because some of those pay grades have changed slightly. But it wasn't a dramatic impact when we had this, this portion of it done. I think we may have a different story for you when we bring the teacher stuff forward, so.
Thank you very much, Ms. Reimers.
Mr. Hux?
Aye.
Ms. Rollins?
Aye.
Dr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Chairman Cast?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0.
Consideration of approval of 403B employee hybrid VRS resolution. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, I think that Mr. Bowen did an excellent job of providing the background information to you. So at this point, I just recommend you approve of the resolution that we presented to you, which would have employees not participating in that plan.